Good evening. This meeting will come to order. Regular meeting of the City of West Miami Commission. The time is 8:40. It is an honor for me to preside this meeting tonight in the stead of Mayor Moinia, which is out of town. Madam Manager, can you please lead us in prayer?
Yes, sir. Please rise. Let's bow our head this evening and thank the Lord for the many blessings that we receive every day, for family. And tonight we unite in prayer with the families of all thirty-three crewmen who lost their lives at sea while performing their duty. We also pray for the families who were affected by the recent Oregon State massacre so that they can cope with their tragedy. We pray for world peace. We pray for our world leaders so that they can lead us to a better world. We pray for those who are ill and frail in our city, and especially ask that you bless our mayor and city commissioners with health and wisdom. Keep our military safe, our police officers and firefighters out of harm's way, and we ask this in your name. Amen.
Captain, can you lead us to pledge allegiance, please?
In the flag of the United States of America, and to the record which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Madam Clerk, can you please call the vote call?
Yes, Commissioner Luciano Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rhonda Rodriguez is excused this evening. Commissioner Candida Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanes?
Present.
Preside on the table. Mayor Eduardo Moinia is excused this evening. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item?
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for September 2nd, 2015, regular City Commission meeting.
I make a motion?
Second.
Can you please call the vote?
This Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Three zero, item passes. Presentation of minutes for approval for September 8th, 2015, special City Commission meeting.
Motion?
Second.
Please call the vote.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Three zero, item passes. Mr. Vice Mayor, I request the deferal of the third approval, the approval for the minutes of September 23rd, since Commissioner Suarez had to abstain of, we don't have a quorum to vote, so I request deferal of this item until the commission meeting of October 21st.
Very well. Next item?
Item five, report of the City Manager.
Madam Manager.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Commission, I issued a written report this afternoon that covers the following items. Unbelievable, but the holidays are quickly approaching. We're working with Commissioner Suarez to prepare for the Thanksgiving celebration at the West Miami Community Center. The festivities are scheduled for Thursday, November 19th, 2015. A calendar has been sent to the mayor and the city commissioners. Commissioner Suarez is working with the Makasuki Tribe to ensure the delivery of the turkeys for our senior citizens, both congregate and the home-delivered. So, that should be a nice event. I also got last-minute word from Leon Medical Center. They will be sponsoring the music and the entertainment for our seniors on that day. The 2015-2016 budget paperwork is almost done. We're waiting for the proofs of publications from the newspaper. The city clerk has requested that. As soon as I have that, we are submitting all the documentation on the passage of the budget to the Department of Revenue, and upon their review, as customary, they will issue a compliance letter to the City of West Miami. The next item on my report is the lighting of the tree ceremony. The mayor has asked for us to prepare the customary sponsorship letters to the business community in preparation of the holiday celebration, as customary. That said, we are anticipating approval from the mayor and the commission to set a date and time for the celebration. Based on the school calendars and in keeping with also the Hanukkah celebration, we've set aside Wednesday, December 9th, 2015, at 6:00 PM for the lighting of the tree celebration. The mayor and Commissioner Rodriguez, who are not here this evening because they're both out of town on personal matters with their families, are okay with this date and have encouraged you all to agree if your schedule permits it, so that we can move forward with the celebration plans.
That's December 9th?
Correct. That falls on a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
And we checked the school calendars. That's right before the week where the children have their midterm exams before the holidays. And we also checked the commencement and the ending of Hanukkah, and it falls within that period of time.
So tentatively, December 9th?
Pending your approval.
Fine, good me.
Do we need to make a decision tonight?
Mr. Villalobos?
Yes.
Motion?
So I guess we're in agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Do you vote? Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Three zero, item passes.
So lighting of the tree ceremony, December 9th?
At 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM at the West Miami Recreation Center.
Be there, be square.
The tutoring program, the city's gearing up for the 2015-2016 tutoring program championed by Commissioner Rodriguez. We've issued the attached memorandums to the parents, and we have invited them to attend an orientation meeting next Wednesday, October 14th, at 5:15 PM at the West Miami Recreation Center to discuss the lesson plans for a six-week module to include emphasis on literacy. Tutoring session will begin the week of October 19th. Halloween, Halloween right around the corner, and the city will be augmenting the police presence in the community as in the past to ensure safety for our trick-or-treaters in the neighborhood. So you'll see a lot of policemen out there, and hopefully a lot of lights, and that's a good feeling for the parents and the community. Again, as customary, the West Miami Recreation Center will host a costume party and Halloween party for the after-school participants. Vice Mayor Juan Blanes and the West Miami Department, Specialist Sergeant Carolina De La Use will be working with park staff to ensure a safe Halloween.
Do you have a date?
Yes, October. I just talked to John Michael Lopez this evening, and he was checking the school calendar and that we need to have this event on October 29th. You will receive a calendar from our office, and that is after school. We'll probably be ready to start with the costume, the judging of the costumes at around 4 o'clock. We're trying to get some cupcakes donated by Latin American, and hopefully the kids will get a pep talk from our Sergeant De La Use, and we'll have a nice Halloween party at the Rebecca Sosa Multipurpose Facility.
Perfect. Great.
The next, and last item in my report is we are in receipt of a letter that the mayor tendered over to our office from the property appraiser's office that addresses the issue of their, the vans that, equipped vans that they will be sending into the various neighborhoods to ensure a fair and equitable assessment for all property owners in Miami-Dade County. Their office is continuing what they call a re-inspection project that will improve the accuracy of property records and make sure that the right values go on our next tax rolls. Our next tax rolls, as defined by Florida statutes, have to be certified on January 1st of every year. If you see two white vans, and they're clearly marked with Miami-Dade County Office of Property Appraiser, it is a van that is equipped, and they're taking with some specialized cameras. They will capture street-level images of individual properties as well as take inventories of improved parcels. That means anybody who's doing work to their home without a proper valid building permit will probably be captured by these high-end cameras, if you want to call it that. So we would, we are going to do something to promote in our website to make sure that the residents contact us before they do work in their homes, because the county will be out here assessing the properties in the coming months.
Can we place that in our website?
Yes, and our Facebook page. I think it's important, and that's going to be an invitation for residents to contact the building department and make sure that before they do any work at home, that they check to make sure that they, you know, they comply with the permit requirements.
And also as far as the vans driving around doing such?
Right. They are labeled Miami-Dade County Office of Property Appraiser. Nonetheless, it may cause concern for some residents, so...
Is there a date?
There is no date. They are deploying these vans, and I can't tell you, and I don't believe that they're able to tell us when they will be here.
All right. The elemental surprise will be gone then.
That's it. That concludes my report, Vice Mayor, I mean, Mr. Mayor, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to respond to those.
Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item six, report of the City Attorney.
Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I have been negotiating property with HSBC and Stewart Title, present is an attorney by the name of Joe Ryan, on a property located at 6551 Northwest, I'm sorry, Southwest 13 Terrace. This is a property that was in foreclosure for quite a while, and the bank was able to finally obtain a title on that property, and they had spent, and I would have been supplied with the invoices, forty-one thousand, almost forty-one thousand.
One quick question, are we jumping right into?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just called it out of turn, I'm sorry.
Well, can we do that? Go into new business?
No, no, this is up to you. I'm sorry.
Well, since he's standing there, you started talking about it.
Okay.
And if we can do it, let's do it.
Okay, fine. Well, the moral of the story is that this property that was in disarray, Stewart Title and HSBC spent forty-one thousand dollars. I understand.
Madam Clerk, for the record, can you state that this will be?
These are items 11 under New Business Agenda Items, item 11A and 11B. If you would allow me, I can read the items for the record.
Would you like her to read before Mr. Attorney?
That's okay.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Item 11A, request for mitigation of code enforcement liens for code violations of the property located at 6551 Southwest 13 Terrace, West Miami, Florida, and owner HSBC Bank USA National Association Trustees in care of Wells Fargo Home Mortgage. And item 11B, this is a resolution of the mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the City Manager to accept a mitigation offer in the amount of blank from HSBC Bank USA National Association Trustees in care of Wells Fargo Home Mortgage on code enforcement liens for code violations at the property located at 6551 Southwest 13 Terrace, West Miami, Florida, providing that if payment in full is not paid by blank, then the amount owed shall revert to the original amount, providing for effective date by mayor and city commission.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Well, thank you very much, and I apologize again for being...
I forgive you.
Okay. Now, we, as I said before, I just checked out with Mr. Penna, that had advised me that all violations have been cleared, and there have been certain violations which we had list, I'm sorry, leaned against that were placed on the property or against the property after a list pendants have been filed. Therefore, our liens were subsequent to and inferior to the mortgages. So, the attorney's present, so he can address to you as to the offer that they have made.
Yes. Sir, can you state your name?
Yes, my name is Joseph Ryan, and I do represent HSBC. Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. And as the City Attorney correctly recounted, I believe we are in full compliance with the code enforcement violations. To my knowledge, there are six liens, two of which I believe were foreclosed out because they were recorded after the list pendants and before the certificate of title. There are four other remaining code enforcement liens, and it would be our position to offer ten thousand dollars as a mitigated sum for that. I do reiterate that we did put forty-one thousand dollars' worth of repair work into the property, and we believe that's a fair and equitable amount for mitigation.
I think that, taking under consideration the exhaustive work the attorney has done, and the fact that your client did invest at least forty-one thousand dollars into the repairs of this property, and in our position, I think it would be in our best interest to accept this offer today. I thank you very much for bringing this offer to us. I believe that you are acting in good faith, and so is your client. So can I please have a motion to accept this offer?
How much, I have a question. How much is the grand total, one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars?
Pardon me?
The total, grand total, one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. That says a...
Yes.
I think that grand total of the liens that I think are enforced...
Liens and fines and everything?
I came up to about seventy-one for the four liens that were filed after the certificate of title. That was my calculation, about seventy-one thousand.
And you pay all the liens?
Pardon me?
All the liens are clear?
All the violations are...
And the violations?
Yeah, we have brought the property in full compliance, yes.
I'm sorry, I cannot hear the offer. How much are you offering?
We're offering ten thousand.
For the one hundred and thirty-two thousand?
No, let me, let me explain something.
Please clarify this.
Yes, yes, Commissioner.
Mr. Attorney, please.
The issue is this. See, we have several liens on that property, but there are some liens that are inferior to the mortgage because they were placed after the mortgage was filed. In other words, in the state of Florida, pursuant to Supreme Court case City of West Palm versus Wells Fargo, May 16, 2013, a mortgage has preference if they're filed first. Our liens came out afterwards, so even though in our books it says one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, it's really not that, because about forty-some-odd thousand dollars of that came, were wiped out by the lien foreclosure that were made. So normally, under normal circumstances, the city, and I had to advise the bank and the attorney, we have settled usually for about 10% of the amount owed. In this particular case, we're going a little bit beyond 10% because they're offering ten thousand, and we have about seventy thousand dollars.
It's fourteen percent of the seventy-one thousand dollars expressed by the attorney.
I think that, again, let me repeat myself again, under the circumstances and the exhaustive work that the attorney has, researches matter, and the fact that his client has invested in good faith at least forty-one thousand dollars in the repairs of the property, and the property is up to code, Mr. Penna?
Yes.
And they are here in good faith, and they're offering the ten thousand dollars. I think that it would be, it would be in the best interest for the City of West Miami at this moment to approve that offer.
Yeah, but I just clarify now, it's one hundred and thirty-six, one hundred and thirty-two...
We're aware of that, Commissioner. We all are aware of that.
But that amount is not enforceable.
Can I finish?
Yes, sir.
But we're talking about a seventy-one, seventy-one thousand, and the offer is ten thousand.
Yes, sir.
So that's, that's it. That's a clarification I just need to make clear.
Yes, Commissioner.
For seventy-one thousand, if they're offering ten thousand.
That's correct.
So it's okay, because it's over ten thousand, so I agree with you.
I make a motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the vote?
Yes, and that amount to be paid on, in ninety days.
That would be acceptable, yes.
Yes, on the motion, Commissioner Suarez, have you voted?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Blanes?
Yes, thank you.
Three zero, item passes.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, if we can go back to the order of the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Attorney, were you done? I'm sorry. Were you done with your report?
Yes, sir.
Next item will be the Report of the City Engineers, item seven. No report this evening. Item eight, committee reports. On the committee reports, the Report of the Mayor, we understand the mayor is not here, but maybe the City Manager will take this item on behalf of the mayor, which is the designation, thank you very much, which is the designation of one elected official to serve as director and one as an alternate director of the Miami-Dade County League of Cities for a period of one year.
The, if I may, the mayor asked me to notify everyone, although we have issued copies of the letter issued to Miami-Dade County League of Cities. He will be serving as the mayor, obviously as the director to the Miami-Dade County League of Cities, and he has designated Commissioner Rhonda Rodriguez to serve as an alternate if he cannot attend the meetings. I mean, everybody can attend, but in voting terms, you, each municipality that participates in the League of Cities must have one voting member, which is the director, and another alternate. So he has issued a letter to the League of Cities and wanted it in the record, and copies have been issued to you via email, and I believe hard copies are in your box.
Great. Thank you. Next item?
Item nine, cities and presentations.
Anybody signed up to speak?
Nobody has submitted a speaker's card to my office, Mr. Mayor.
Would you suggest, I would suggest, Mr. Mayor, that you ask the people present whether or not they want to speak?
I was just going to exert my privilege, and I was going to do just that. If anyone from, present here today, our illustrious resident, that would like to speak on the matter that I know is pressing all of you, I welcome you to come and say something at this time. And I choose, is it my privilege to pick someone? I choose Maria Diaz.
Hi, Maria Diaz, 6246 L plus 15th Street. I have a question, and I've lived here all my life, and I should know the procedure, but I actually don't. I don't know if I'm going to have questions after I hear what you have to say, and so I would like to speak, but I'm not sure I want to speak or what I want to speak.
Well, first, what we can say is that the issue at hand is the property that's...
Yes, it is. And we're off 15th Street.
And for the record...
It is an agenda item, sir.
Well...
Right. Because we don't know what you've done, so that we don't know. I mean, I have a very pressing question that just came up after this attorney spoke.
Is it regarding the item?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Attorney, so...
It's up to you whether you want to hear them now or at the time that you bring out the item. I think that...
You know what? For the record, Madam Clerk, go ahead and read for the, for the record, this item, and we'll get right into it.
So take, we're going to take this item out of order?
Please.
Item 11F, report by the, by the Office of the City Manager in reference to the property 1500 Southwest 62nd Avenue, property conditions.
If, Maria, if you can allow the City Manager to say a few words?
Okay, I'll come in.
No, no, you can stand there if you like.
No, no.
I, she'll, yeah, okay.
Be brief.
Because she might answer a lot of your questions, or, or she might, you know, cause more questions. So, Madam Manager.
Thank you, and I'll be as forthright as possible, and I know that's sometimes not very popular, but we're dealing with a property that's been an eyesore for the community for years. This is nothing new. This property's been under violation for many years. It's my understanding that at some point there was foreclosure action. There, it is my understanding that there was an absentee landlord situation, and that this landlord was claiming homestead exemption, and when we discovered it, I personally contacted the property appraiser's office, and I spoke to Pedro Garcia and to Lazaros Solis, and they did an investigation, and their investigation revealed that the owner at the time, which was a Mr. Rizzo, was claiming homestead fraudulent information to the properties, a property appraiser's office, and they backtaxed him to the tune of twenty-five thousand dollars in back taxes for misleading the property appraiser's office on the issue of the homestead exemption. This property owner went to the property appraiser's office and paid the twenty-five thousand dollars, and basically the property had all the taxes paid in full. I don't know the condition of the house, and it's not the position of the city to look inside the property unless there are other types of activities occurring. The outside of the property is overgrown. It has trash, debris, mattresses, and it has become a sanitary and a nuisance issue, obviously, not only to the city, but especially affected are the surrounding area neighbors that are represented here this evening, many whom I have spoken to on several occasions regarding the condition of the property. The city has a code enforcement ordinance that it observes pursuant to the statutes. Code enforcement is guided by Florida statutes, and as such, we have steps that we must follow to ensure compliance. The property has fallen in, in the condition that it is in because of the repeat offenses. We have served this property with numerous violations throughout the years, and they come and they basically give it a little makeover and clean it up, and, you know, next month we're citing them again, and we deal with the property on a repeat offense type of code enforcement action. Lately, I believe, as, as early as last, a week ago, last Thursday, they were served with a nuisance abatement. I signed the nuisance abatement letter pursuant to the city ordinance, and we posted the property. We mailed the notice to the owner of record, which is not the gentleman that I was referring to before. He's no longer the owner. There was a sale, a transaction that occurred, and this transaction occurred during the month of July 2015. The city was never notified that there was a sale taking place in the property, and now we're dealing with a different owner. There was no request made by any title company for a lien search. Maybe it was a cash deal. However, it should be noted and understood that code enforcement action that results in a lien is, stays with the property. Code enforcement action is not against an individual, but it is against a property. So the fines and the liens are still there as imposed by the board, and we place liens as ordered by the board in each and every case. There are twelve cases, Mr. Penna, correct me along the way if I make a mistake, but there are twelve different cases of code enforcement that the city has opened, twelve files on different types of violations. We try to establish contact, we have tried to work with the owner, to no avail. So the next step was to serve them with an abatement process, and we did. Mind you, I understand how the neighbors feel, because it's really out of hand, and it's an eyesore for the community, and it is a health and welfare situation. I don't know what kind of rodents or rats or other type of animals may be in there that, you know, could have, could pose a health issue for the community. That said, the property is scheduled to be cleaned by somebody that the city has contacted because we don't have the resources to do it next week, and I forget the date. I believe it's next Thursday, the 15th, if my memory doesn't fail me.
After the 15th.
Pardon?
After the 15th.
After the 15th. They have until the 15th for compliance, correct? So after the 15th, the city will go in there with the, with the personnel that we need and clear up the property, at which time all the mattresses and all those bags of dirt or whatever garbage is, is in the yard, the city will pick it up, and we will clean the property as best we can. The cost of those efforts will be, another lien shall, shall become another lien against the property. What can we do to get them to comply in the future? Your guess is as good as mine. There is a new owner of record. We don't know whether there are legal tenants in there. The water deposit is still under the old tenant's name, and there is no, no one that has stepped forward to take any action or work with the city to attain compliance on the property. The police department has been active, as they are with the entire community, and we don't know whether they're rightful tenants, because we haven't seen a lease, there's no, no communication whatsoever, or if there's squatters. I cannot tell you that, because I, we don't know.
The address of the owner is at PO Box.
The address of the owner, the new owner of record, thank you, Mr. Villalobos, is at PO Box, and that is the only available address that we have. And I understand that members of the community may have some information on the new owners that they may have Googled or obtained or whatever, but we have to serve them pursuant to what the law tells us we can do. We can't go out and chase the guy even if we know where he lives, and we cannot send a correspondence to an address even if somebody brings it to our attention, because that's not the way code enforcement works. And then we are circumventing the law by not following the steps that are necessary. And I know this is not exactly what people want to hear, but we're handcuffed. And I know this is not exactly what people wanna hear, but we're handcuffed.
I have a question, something that I just thought of. You say that the water account, it's still under the previous owner's name?
Correct, correct.
And there's a deposit there that he made?
Yes.
The new owner has not come forth?
No.
To close that account, or I don't know if it's his place to close it, or just open a new one?
Right.
Okay, so...
There's no communication from any of them.
Here's my question. Can we, Mr. Attorney, shut the water off?
You can't.
And once we do that, then we are gonna prompt somebody to come forth and say, hey, I need water, and maybe the owner will come to the city and open up an account, and that way, you know, he can maybe be advice of the situation, or maybe the renters that are presiding there, if they are renters or not, they can come forth, and at least we'll know a little bit about them. Can we turn the water off?
No, sir, you cannot.
Why not?
Well, to shut the water is not because there's a violation, a code enforcement violation. Closing the water out is a significant remedy that is not looked well upon the courts. So, I don't know that one thing has to do with the other, as long as they're paying their bill, I don't think really that you could shut up the water.
Madam Manager, are they paid?
Maria's checking to see that. I should have a response tomorrow, because we have to see if at some point, the old tenant called. We have to, we have to have an idea of when they moved out, so that we can apply whatever they consumed until the day they left, and start dealing with these new tenants.
Mr. Mayor, the problem is this, we...
We usually put a tag, I'm sorry, Mr. Viallos, we put a tag if there's no deposit. We hand carry a tag, we put it on their doorknob, and we say, please contact the office regarding a new customer required deposit. They have not come forward.
The problem is that we don't know that, you see, it was not the owner that placed the deposit on the water, it was the renter, it was the letsee. We don't know that that letsee does not live there anymore. That's only our guess that he doesn't, but we have no proof that he does not, he's not the one that is living, residing there right now. We don't know who lives right there, no. As far as, I don't know.
Understood. I'm just trying to find a way to see if we can, you know, get them to come forth, so we can have more information about them, Commissioner Suarez.
Now, Viallos, I told Mr. Counsel, the point, the water account in this moment is in the name of a person.
Yes, sir.
That person used to be a renter, or the owner, a previous owner?
Renter.
The letsee, the renter.
A letsee, a renter. So, the previous owner never was in the water account.
I don't know that it was not, sir, because that's, the renter just rented the home.
Let me repeat the question. According with the records, was the person who owned the property, and according with the records, the water is in the name of a person, but it's not the former owner.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
So, the name of the account is in the name of somebody who was living there, a renter.
Right.
And now, we don't know if that person is still living there, or is not living there.
We don't know.
That's the point, we don't know.
That is correct.
And they pay whoever is that person, at the name of that person, whoever is, the account is being paid every month.
Every three months?
Every three months.
Right.
So, we don't know if the guy, the person lives there, but the pay, the account has been paid.
Correct.
So, that's the problem we have.
Mr. Asbell, can you please approach the microphone?
Do they pay cash? debit, credit, check, cash?
Elliot Asbell, 15345 Southwest 77 Court, Palmetto Bay, Florida, 33157. As the commission knows, as counsel knows, as the manager knows, I am a property owner, and I have numerous tenants, and I have water bills, and I also have rules and regulations. Any number of things that can happen, and have happened over my 40 years, I will tell you that I agree with Mr. Mayor, acting mayor, vice mayor, and I'm not saying that the city attorney is wrong. I think he is quite correct when he states that if, in fact, a property owner turns off the water, if, in fact, that, for me, it's always happened, just as Vice Mayor has said, some party comes forward, and then there is discussion and remedy. Never has failed. If, in fact, there is going to be litigation, the city attorney is quite correct. Historically, the courts and most judges frowned on that action. He is not understating that. But let me stress, if, in fact, somebody has got to initiate that litigation, so again, you're forcing somebody to step forward. In my opinion, the city attorney is quite right, with all due caution in terms of what he has stated. If he were my attorney, because I've gone through this numerous times, depending on the circumstances, and certainly, if they were at all similar to what's being discussed here tonight, I would say to my attorney, thank you for your advice, you have forewarned me, and as a property owner, I would turn the water off. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Asbell. Mr. Attorney, I do understand why you're saying what you're saying, and I understand that in courts, judges do frown upon this action, but we can actually shut the water off, and as fast as we can shut it off, we can also turn it on, as long as we get someone to come forth. Right now, we have a whole block of residents, good residents, residents that have resided here in this city and paid taxes for numbers of years, and they have an issue, they have a concern. Their quality of life is being affected, and this board here, this commission, has the power to advise the city manager to do just that. Now, I'm not saying that we're gonna shut the water off, and we're gonna leave it off, but we are going to try to get them to respond. Someone will come forth, it always does. That's why I let Mr. Asbell express himself. I'm sure that he was gonna allude to what he just stated. So, this is a tool that we can use, and by the same token, we can apply it very softly or very harshly, and in this case, we're just gonna apply it to get a response. And as soon as we get the response, and we get the proper communication or documentation, at least we'll know who we're dealing with, at least we'll know if these people are squatters, we'll know who they are, once they give their name and, you know, their identification to open up the new water account. I'm sure the police will benefit from this information, as far as what might be going on there. So, I think it would behoove us to instruct the city manager to do just that, and I thank you for your, for your...
Advice.
...outstanding caution statement that you always make, but like I say, we are not going to let this go to litigation. We are not going to let it go to a courtroom. We're not gonna do that. And for the record, it doesn't really matter who it is that is there, you know, bad guy, good guy, whatever, you know, shutting the water off is, I can imagine why the courts frown upon this, because, you know, it is something that is sort of abusive to a certain extent. I mean, imagine not being able to flush your toilet, so, but it is something that we have, that we can use, to try to bring about some starting point, and I am pretty sure that you will benefit from the information that will come forth from this action. So, I think it's something that we need to do, and I don't know how this board feels about it, but I know exactly how our residents, especially the ones living on that block field.
May I say something?
Mr. Attorney.
Okay. I'm not a voting member of the commission. My job is to advise you what I believe that the law reads. Your instruction upon the manager might supersede my advice, and that would be what you might or might not do.
I know that.
Okay.
So...
But I have a question.
Commissioner Suarez.
Now, Viallos, is legal that we do that?
I think it is, sir.
Is, or is not?
I believe that it is, sir.
Is, or is not?
Sir?
Is legal, or is not legal?
I believe that it is illegal. I believe that. But it's up to you.
Can the tenants, what is the right of the tenants to, if that happened, the water is turned off, what is the substance of their protest? Health? Or what else?
What would be their response? I don't know what the response might be, sir. They might come and say, what is it that you wanna do? What is it that you want us to do? They might face the city administration and come forward, but I don't know what they're gonna do. I mean, that's, that's for somebody else to decide.
Do they pay, do they pay cash, or by check?
It could be debit card, credit card, cash, checks, we take...
Well, Madam Manager, are they, are they up to, they, is the water, has the water been paid up to this point?
We are doing, okay, we asked Maria to do, and she'll let me know tomorrow, because I don't know whether this is the trimester that they were billed, or if we're still working on the other trimester. I gotta, she's gotta look at this. We have spoken to her. Maria was out for a few days because she had a health issue with her son. She's back now, she's gonna check. She did check that the deposit is still under the old owner's name, but now we have to sort of decipher the bill out, if you wanna, you know, understand it.
Well, let's get her to expedite this, this matter.
These people that are there, these new tenants, these tenants are fairly new, if, they're new faces in the neighborhood. They've been there a couple of months, if that. So, we've gotta see the cutoff date for the last billing, when the new bills kicked in, what water applies to them, and what water is, consumption is covered by the existing deposit left by the former tenant, who was also working without a valid lease, it was a fake lease.
Well, let's do something. Let's expedite that information, and as soon as we see that they owe money, send them a bill, and how long do we usually give our residents?
Thirty-five days.
Thirty-five days. Okay, Mr. Attorney, if we don't receive payment in 35 days...
Then we disconnect the water.
Then we shut the water off.
We give them a notice, and we tell them, if you don't pay by such and such a date, your water would be disconnected. We put a yellow hanger on the door.
Mr. Asbell, can you approach the microphone? Ms. Diaz, can you please let Mr. Asbell speak?
Of course.
He does shed a lot of information in this matter, because of his experience.
Elliot Asbell, 15345 Southwest 77 Court, Palmetto Bay, Florida, 33157. This commission, and previous commissions, in my opinion, bend over backwards in terms of leniency and forgiveness, and whatever, in terms of working with the residents, and although I would not go to the lengths, I have seen this commission go, I applaud and understand when it does that. In this particular case, even if your last bill has been paid, you don't have that information yet, that's just an issue for the manager and this information to be able to decipher what the water bill minus the present deposit is, and then give you all an amount. That's what that information is all about, nothing less and nothing more. It's still, if, in fact, the existing people, whoever are occupying and using and consuming, it still does not bring them forward. That person, all they have to do is tender a payment on that account to the manager's office, that payment appropriately will be accepted and deposited, and yet, then, you will still be back at square one, and I believe your good residents have suffered too much already, and there is no way, no way at this point, with my counsel's advice, absolutely, unequivocally, no way tomorrow that water would be shut up. I would thank my attorney, I would, and somebody, if he's right, is going to have to initiate litigation. That means somebody has to step forward, and you'll have to answer in court. I personally believe, with my experience, notwithstanding a judge's normal reaction to be upset by a turnoff, given the history and mitigating circumstances, if I was litigated against, my attorney would go into court, understanding a judge's predisposition, and lay out the entire scenario, and it's not a fact, but it is my belief that I would not be dealing with a judge and/or a penalty or whatever, in terms of what I've done. That's my opinion. However, if I was wrong, I would be perfectly capable and willing to pay and apologize to the judge, and pay any and all fine issue to me, because what's most important to me, and similar to these residents, as this situation comes to an end as quickly as possible, and by turning off the water, yes, with some risk, which I don't believe will take place in the end, will bring somebody forward, and you can earnestly say to these people that tonight, you have made a decision to do everything in your power, tonight, to begin to have a resolution by forcing somebody to come forward. So, the information that you're looking to, and giving another 35 days on my property definitely could not take place, and if I were one of these people, would be unacceptable to me, in terms of the responsibility of this commission, as to them and any other residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Asbell.
You ready? Maria Diaz, 6246 Southwest 15th Street. I said I wasn't gonna get involved, and I said I wasn't gonna be here, and I said, when I read emails, that I've been talking about this house for the last four years, and there was nothing left to say. However, I have a 19-year-old who came home last night to find my blocks full of cops. I'm tired, and it's not just an eyesore, this is a safety issue. There's people that live alone in this block, women by ourselves, there's young children, there's a bus stop directly in front of this house. there's a bus stop directly in front of this house that picks up kids in the morning and at the afternoon. Are we going to wait until something happens? Okay, we have no proof that something's going on there, but let's face it, no one lives there, and if we cut the water, I'm afraid to say, they're not even going to notice. These people don't clean. They just throw it out to the yard. It's not going to make a difference because they're not bathing there, they're using the house for other purposes, whatever it is, and I don't care. But it is a safety issue, and I am very concerned. I am alone, I have two young kids that live with me, and yes, they're big, but they're young, and they're kids. And they bring friends over, and it's ridiculous. It is, it's not embarrassing, it's a problem. And now I'm really, really concerned. This house was sold on July 30th. Now, if we had liens placed on that house, how did this happen? Or were the liens, because now I don't understand, the gentleman that was speaking here, the attorney before, said if the lien should place after the sale, then it don't apply. So, now if we place any liens, they don't apply, because the house was already sold. So, now we're back to square one. We've done nothing in the last four years. There's new people in the house today. There's brand-new people in the house today. What are we going to do? So, they have all the rights, and I'm going to have to sell my house, or try to sell my house now and leave because I don't feel safe anymore? It's not an eyesore. This goes way beyond. My safety's involved, all our safeties are involved. I have children. I don't want to leave, but I'm, they're going to drag me out. They're going to win. They are going to win. And I said I wasn't going to get involved, but last night just blew it. Just blew it. And I can't believe that, I mean...
That there's nothing that can be done.
That there's nothing can be done.
Now, I have a question for you, Maria. You said last night was a police presence there?
I'm not going to use the words that were used, but yes, there was a spousal abuse or whatever. It was a... Maybe they'll take care of themselves.
Let me, let me go back. You're a neighbor, like we are all neighbors. My question is this. If the police has been, county police or West Miami, or because they interrupted...
Everybody's watching the house. We have cameras on the house. The neighbors have cameras on the house. You want to know who comes in and out? Somebody in this room has cameras.
Maria, can you, can you let me finish my point?
Yes.
Neighbors has been telling me that the new people move back and forth. They don't go to the front door, they go to the back door. Many persons is telling me that the county police has been around. Even police of Miami, because we have an interlocal agreement, Miami police, county police, our police has been around. My point, where I go... Blanche, listen to this.
I am listening.
Is my point. These people are under, apparently, everybody knows that something is wrong there in the way of living. It's not the way that our residents do. Now, my point is, suppose that we, this board, they're using the power that they have, tell the manager, Mr. Viallos, please, if you don't help me, I mean, if you don't pay attention to me, then I cannot answer your question. I'm sorry. I know it's important we're talking your land, but...
We're talking about this issue, sir.
No, but you listen to what I'm talking.
Okay, fine.
I'm talking to a resident.
Okay, I'm sorry, sorry, go ahead.
So, it's important that they participate with me.
Okay.
I'm telling that, apparently, everybody knows that the activities there is strange. It is not normal, our residents do. And everybody noticed that some kind of police presence, whatever, is around. County, West Miami, or Miami, interlocal agreement that we have, police around. My point is this. We know what's happening, and now this board instruct your land, the manager, cut the water off, and the water is cut, and then they take an issue like they are victims, because they have been paying the water, and it's not legal that we cut the water. Can we put them in a victim instead to be that they're doing something irregular, they may come back to us and say, whatever, if they have friends, lawyers, whatever, that we are abusing of them? And then we put them on the other side of the wall instead to be the people that who doing strange things? They may be, "Oh, we have invaded the water." And that's my point. Can that happen, and then we don't know what kind of investigations, what kind of people are around?
Commissioner, that is a very good point that you bring up.
Because I don't want to put them in the position that they, we are abusing of them.
Victimizing them.
That's my point.
Yeah.
And they say, "Oh, I don't know."
Well, here's, listen, you bring a very, very good point.
Because something happened.
I commend you.
And I know the police is around, is around, is around, so somebody's working there. And what I don't want to do is interrupt whatever work is being done there for whatever police branch is, county, West Miami.
Shutting the water off is not going to have anything to do with what the police is doing.
No, but I mean, putting them on, as victims, that they have been abused, is my point.
You are now going to victimize people if you shut their water off for a day or two. You will victimize them if you shut the water off for a week, for a month, for an extended period of time.
You don't get my point.
Commissioner.
You don't get my point.
I understand your point perfectly.
I'm not talking about many days.
I am talking, I understand your point perfectly. These people that live in such disarray, that don't even take their own garbage out, that don't sleep at regular hours of the night, they're constantly loitering up and down the block. These people are not regular, normal people like you and I. These people are different.
But you don't get my...
And my point is this, Commissioner, my point is, since they are such, they behave with such an irregular behavior, unlike any reasonable, unlike any rational, normal behavior, they are not going to proceed...
You, you...
They are not, it is my opinion that they are not going to proceed with such eloquent understanding of the law, and all of a sudden, they're going to say, "Oh, we are victims." As a matter of fact, what's going to happen is probably what Ms. Diaz alluded to. They're not even going to notice that the water's been turned off. And to our surprise, we might shut the water off, and guess what? We might not have anyone come forth. So, that is a possibility. What I am alluding to here is, and we have the power to do this, we represent them, them. They, they're the ones that voted for us and put us in this position to represent them and to make the best possible decision to have, so they can have the best possible quality of life. And what I'm asking here, this board, to do is not victimize anyone, is not do anything illegal, is just to use logic and reason, as Mr. Asbell alluded to. We have a gentleman here that for many, many years, over forty, fifty years, that has been his business. And in his experience, he has alluded to the possible things that can happen. And you want to, please, let me finish. Let me finish.
Make a motion.
Let me finish, please.
Make a motion to cut it off.
Let me finish. I don't know what I'm going to make a motion on. Let me finish, and then maybe we can find out what we're going to make a motion on. But cutting the water off is something that will get a reaction, and it will bring forth much information. So, it is, it is, it is my intention to advise my colleagues here, you, Commissioner Suarez, and you, Commissioner Blanca, to make this decision. We are not going to victimize anyone, we're not going to abuse anyone, we're going to shut the water off for a day or two or three, and see what happens. You know, nothing might happen. These people live in such, with such irregularity that...
Oh, my God.
And then if that's the case, then, boy, we're dealing with something even more serious than we think we're dealing with.
Mayor, in order to cut the water off, make a motion.
We're not done listening to everyone, and I would like to listen to Ms. Suarez.
Good evening, I'm Evelyn Paz, I reside at 6237 Southwest 15th Street. Been living in this house for over twenty years. I'm a proud resident of West Miami, and I want to express to the commission that for every action, there is a reaction, and in this case, the residents of the 15th Street and 16th Street are seeing constant abuse on us. So, I ask you, I beg you to please cut the water. Cut the water off for one, two, three days. They won't notice. They're not even there. They come, they go. We've seen activities. We tell our kids, "Don't go outside, go inside, don't do this." How can we live like that? How would you like to live on our block and experience what we've been experiencing for over four years, or three and a half years? It is not a pleasant sight, and we live in fear. We're buying lights for outside, we have to get the alarm system repaired, we have to do all these little things. Why? Because we're in fear of our own outdoors? Are we living in a third-world country? I ask you, are we? No, we're not. And I strongly suggest for every action, there's a reaction, so please, try to do the correct decisions for us residents that have been going through this for four years, and do the right thing. Three days versus four years, I think that I've said enough. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Let's go to, finish this.
This is something that I...
I second.
But wait, I'm not making a motion. This is, this is, this is something, this is something that I thought that we could do to get a handle on this big problem that we have. And it's one of many things that we're doing. It's not just that, I want you all to realize that. But this is something that will get something to happen right away. That's why I think that is important. Ms. Diaz?
I just came back from one thing. She mentioned the lights, and I forgot to mention that. We have three lights on that street. Two are out, one in front of my house, one in front of McDermott's house.
That's been reported.
I've reported them, but the number is missing. The pole number is missing. If you look at all our streetlights, they have a number.
Yes.
Ours are stripped. And I went down 15th Street from 62nd Avenue to 65th, only our block is stripped. I'm not saying anything, but it's, I don't know why.
Mr. McDermott.
Because it's harder to report when you don't have the numbers.
Right.
And none of ours have the numbers.
We gave FPL the location, Mr. McDermott assured me...
They told me within five days they'd be there.
They, hopefully, it'll be before then.
Madam Manager, can we go a step further, and can we contact Armando Fernandez?
We have, Charlie has done that, and we have been assured that it's going to be resolved.
Can you please reach out to him again?
Sure.
And tell him to resolve this matter as soon as possible?
Sure.
And also mention to him that the, that the numbers of each of these lights have been stripped?
Yes.
So, they can be replaced?
I have a question for Maria. Maria, how many days do your lights has been off?
Mine started flickering before it went off, and I have to be honest, it took me a while to report it. I reported it two days ago, and I got an email.
And the others, because there are one...
I don't know, because somebody told me that came to my house, "Your block is so dark." And I said, "Yeah, I don't have a light." And then I, yeah, I said, "It's not my house, it's the entire block."
And how many days that entire block?
I'll lie to you. I'm very, but if it's dark, I don't go out.
Well, but anyway, if you notice...
It's been like five or six days.
Yeah, because next day in the morning, you call.
But the problem is that the pole number isn't there, so we had to look up how to report it, because without the pole number, it's not a season.
But anyway, you have the addresses, and you have the public works.
Mr. Mayor, we need a record.
Yes.
So, if anybody's going to speak, go ahead to the podium.
If anyone is going to speak, please come forth to the microphone, so there will be a proper record of what is being said. Mr. Surizarian.
Good evening, everybody.
I love that name.
Mitchell Zuriyan from 6317 Southwest 15th Street. I can appreciate both sides, the city's standpoint, and along with the residents. Live on 15th Street. I was coming back home from a jog when I saw this commotion and police action, so I can appreciate what's going on there. I understand that being very rash and going forward and cutting the water would seem like it would solve a lot of the problems, but I feel like that this is a problem that's going to continue without the, even if the water is cut. It seems like this property is in disarray, and there's so many more issues at hand than maybe just getting a response. If they can quickly slide through the problem like they did, have been continuing to do, the city needs to set a precedent so that this doesn't continue to repeat, and maybe come up with more information and a comprehensive plan by the next commission, or maybe have a special meeting, so that we can address this and never have this problem again. Because as I've noticed, our community is slowly, unfortunately, becoming a more of a renter community. And we're going to continue to have the repetition of this problem, depending on the kind of people that move into this problem, into this, into this city. So, I just feel that cutting the water off may gain a response, but the city should have a multi-pronged attack at solving this, along with the liens, the code enforcement violations, and etc. Because if we don't have some kind of plan from the city's standpoint, cutting off the power, you're going to gain a response, but you're not really going to solve the issue at hand.
We do. As we speak, we do. The city does have a plan and is multifaceted. It involves the police, it involves the code enforcement, it involves the city attorney, it involves the administration. We are, we are doing something about it. But there's, like I say, there's only so much that we can do. But believe me, we are doing everything that we can that is within our means, and believe me, it's not just one thing. I just happen to say that we should shut the water off, because, you know, maybe that way we'll get information.
Get a response, yeah.
We'll get information. You know, sometimes, when there's no communication between the parties, you know, there's a great amount of ignorance on both sides. Here we are, assuming, you know, all these things, and quite frankly, maybe the owner bought this property, paid the money for it, and he doesn't have an inkling of an idea of what is going on.
Absolutely.
He probably maybe doesn't realize that he needs to have his lawn cut, that he needs to take, that he needs to make sure that the renters that he has there abide by, you know, the certain rules and regulations of the city. He maybe doesn't even realize that his property is within the city of West Miami that have such regulations. So, again, I'm trying to be as reasonable as I can, and I implore my colleagues to agree with me, to instruct the city manager to shut the water off.
I second you.
Even if it's, thank you, Commissioner, even if it's for a day or two, to see what happens. We could be very surprised. We could have a visit by the property owner, and him be oblivious to everything that is happening, because, you know, he might have his hands full with other things that he's doing, and he just, you know, he just bought that property as an investment. I mean, that could very well be the case. And if that is the case, and if he's a reasonable man, which I hope he is, then you know what? Half of the problems will be solved there, and they can have a better quality of life. So, you know, I am willing, Mr. Attorney, to take that chance. Madam Manager.
I think the next step, and I spoke to Mr. Viallos, and I think I had an opportunity to have a conversation with some of you individually about initiating foreclosure action on that property. And I know that it's easier said than done. The property has been an eyesore, as I reported initially, and as you hear tonight, for the last four years. But there is legal work that takes place before we even jump and authorize the city attorney to initiate foreclosure action. The city attorney has to do a fact-finding title search, correct, sir?
Right.
Madam Manager, we're beating a dead horse here. Before we can fly, we have to crawl.
Exactly.
And you know what? As I stated here, we are doing everything in our power, even including what the manager is alluding to. I think that what we need to do is to proceed with all the avenues that we have taken. I believe we need to, okay, and secure the funds, so the city manager can do a, I mean, our city attorney can do a title search on the property. So, that's one thing that we can agree to do here tonight. Shut the water off and provide the money for the city attorney to do a title search, which will give him a lot of information.
Second.
Please call about, Madam Clerk. And for the record, it was, it was, oh, I need, okay, I need a motion on instructing the city manager to shut the water at the property at...
1500 Southwest 62nd Avenue.
Thank you.
I second your motion.
To get a response, and also to, okay, the money's on the amount of...
For the foreclosure.
This is a preliminary thing to do. We need to do a title search, so we'll order that from a title company, and I don't know how much that going to cost. I don't think that there would be anywhere between five, six, $700.
Madam Manager, so...
I set a cap of $800.
A cap of $800.
And that would be funded out of your 529-320 litigation reserve account.
Okay, very well. That's, that's what's going to be the motion. Who, uh, I need a motion. I need a motion.
I second.
Who, who made the motion?
I second the motion. You?
Commissioner Blanca made the motion.
I second the motion.
Commissioner Blanca made the motion.
Please, please, Madam Clerk, please, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Blannes?
Yes.
3-0, item passed.
And I, I thank you, my colleagues. I, I believe we've done the right thing.
All right. I just wanted to talk about, that's it?
I suggest that there might be other, uh, members of the community that might be wanting to speak, sir. So why don't you ask if anybody else have anything?
Does anyone else want to express themselves on this matter? Please come forth. Going once, going twice, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I, 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 thank you.
Roberto Martinez, 6217 Southwest 15th Cali. Mirete, señor.
We're going to need a, someone to translate for the record. Vamos a neces-
Yo creo que lo entiendo también.
Sí, pero vamos a neces- porque tiene que ser en inglés. Usted habla, entonces la administradora lo va a traducir. O sea, que lo que diga, no lo diga muy largo para que ella-
Y despacio.
Y despacio, para que ella pueda traducir. He is going to, uh, speak in Spanish, uh, and not at great length and very clear and slowly, so, uh-
We can preserve the record.
-manager can translate in English and have it, uh, on the record.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Mirete, esta señora vive largo de la casa.
Permiso. Su nombre, dirección nuevo. My name, Roberto Martinez.
6217?
I reside at 6217.
Southwest 15th Cali.
Southwest 15th Street.
6216 Southwest 15th Street.
Also, and your name, su nombre?
Marina Rivera.
Marina Rivera, 6216 Southwest 15th Street. They're both at the podium.
Yo tengo cámaras en mi casa.
I have cameras in my house.
Hace dos años que las puse.
I installed them, uh, two years ago.
No más que le voy a hablar de los últimos cuatro meses.
I am only going to refer to the last four months.
En los últimos cuatro meses-
In the last four months-
Habían vivido por lo menos unas veinte familias diferentes.
We have seen over 20 families residing at the property, subject property in question.
Yo he llamado personalmente a la policía.
I have contacted the police department 20 or 30 times.
Esta señora vive aterrorizada ahí.
This lady lives in fear.
Entonces, yo conté la matada al lado de la casa-
I chopped the tree down so that the cameras could get a better view.
Para poder ver por la parte de atrás de la casa.
So that we could see what's going on from the back end of the house.
Y en las últimas dos semanas, desde que se vendió esa casa según ustedes, julio 15.
Ever since the, um, last reported sale date of that property, which was July 15th, based on what he knows-
Cinco familias diferentes.
We, uh, there are five different families who have moved into the property.
En al least, por lo menos, 200 personas.
And at least-
Diferentes a mi casa.
Twelve, 200 different people have visited that home.
A todas horas, lo mismo por la mañana.
At any time, it could be-
Lo mismo que por la mañana, lo mismo que por la noche, que por la tarde.
Or in the evening or in the afternoon.
Yo trabajo de cinco a la mañana a una a la tarde.
I work from 5:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Mucho tiempo en mi casa, solo si usted está mirando a ella.
I spend a lot of time at my house and I'm-
Y si ella vive conmigo.
And I also look out for Marina's best interest.
Ella vive con más miedo.
And she lives in fear.
Se lo parquean en su casa.
They park in her house.
En su propiedad encontraron un carro robado hace cuatro meses y nosotros llamamos a la policía.
Four months ago, they recovered a stolen car on her property and the police was contacted and acted.
So what está pasando ahí, conté el nuevo agua, va a seguir.
So whether you cut the water or not, the problem will persist.
Ah, sí, okay.
So, uh, sir?
Yes.
You do understand English, right?
Sí, yes.
As I stated before, we are doing everything we can. And it's not just one thing that we're doing. We're doing many things. It just takes time. We are even considering foreclosing, starting procedures to foreclose on that property. So it's not like we're not doing anything. Maybe hopefully by shutting the water off, we might get a reaction and we might all be pleasantly surprised. Maybe the owner will come forth and once he hears everything that is going on, and if he, like I say, I'm hoping that he is a reasonable man and a just man and say, "Wow, this is not right. This is not fair. I am the property owner and I am going to take responsibility." And then maybe things will change. So I am hoping, it is my hope, that by doing this, we're going to get some type of response. But I can assure you, as I've stated before, we are trying everything that we can do as a city with the laws, with the regulations that we have, with the teeth that we have. We are doing everything, everything that we can. And the attorney and the, and the administrator, the manager, is doing everything possible.
¿Quién usted cree que le llama a la policía? Siempre está gente. Soy yo el 90% de las veces. Ahí tenemos carros.
Sir, you need to wait until she translates, otherwise there will be no record, okay?
Please.
Ah, ah, ahí tenemos carros.
We have-
Sir, let it fit?
Let's, I'm sorry. We have cars.
Por lo menos de 50,000, 60,000, 70,000 dólares.
We have 50, 60, 70,000 dollar cars every single night.
Parqueando por la parte de atrás, cargando y saliendo corriendo todas las noches y no cuatro años.
And they, they, they exit the property in a hasty mode.
No vamos cuatro años atrás.
We're not going to go back four years.
Los últimos seis meses.
We're going to go back the last six months.
Y ahora es que está bien malo eso.
And now, it's, things are really bad.
Hace dos años que yo puse mis cámaras.
Two years ago, I saw my family. We have four cameras looking at that property.
Yes, one more time.
And it just doesn't stop.
We, we understand how you feel. I, as a resident, understand how you feel. We all do, believe me. We all do. And, and, and we are doing the very best that we can do with, with the laws and the regulations that we have. And, and we are taking a course of action. There's some things that are happening as we speak. Uh, we are going to revitalize this effort and we're going to try to expedite it and we're going to fortify it. And we're going to do everything in our power to, to make your, your, your quality of life and the quality of life of the residents of 15th Street better.
Okay.
That, you, you have my, my word on that.
Thank you very much.
¿Cómo es su, eh, su nombre, señor?
Um, Mr.-
Sí.
Mr. Martinez.
No, quiero hacer una pregunta. You know that we are commissioners. You know we are no police officers. You know we don't work in the code enforcement. But we, we apply it in the, whatever laws are. To me, I never heard about this problem this week.
The police know about it?
I never heard.
The police?
Perhaps you never told me anything. Nobody told me about that. This week is the, is when I learned about the how, that, that problem with that. And even I have friends in, in, in the neighborhood. But now, I, I never heard about it. But I'm, but I'm very happy that all you are together and bring up the, the issue. And, and I tell you, as I, this week, in the last three, four days, five days, I learned about that the different police are watching that and, and the activities are strange and everybody, you know, demonstrated that something wrong is there. But you, you may be sure that something is going to be done.
Yeah.
For sure.
Okay, yes.
Because, well, first time coming to this table, this, this issue. But be sure, you know, all men know.
Any, anyone else, uh, would like to speak, express themselves on this matter? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I think that, I don't know whether Mr. Penna has anything to add to the initial report that we gave on the violations, but I think it would, I, I think, I think we covered that end of it, which is the code enforcement. But I think you should hear from your police department because I don't want anybody leaving here tonight thinking or hinting that the police department has or has not been involved with doing whatever it is that they need to do from a police standpoint to protect the welfare of the community. I, I would like for you-
As a matter of fact, I was going to have them do just that.
Thank you.
Because I, I want to cover all the bases.
Yes.
And also, uh, I would like Mr. Penna to, to, to speak briefly as, as far as code enforcement and what is being done.
And the key efforts that are scheduled.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak, please?
Mr. Attorney.
Okay. My call was, I don't want to sound like I've rained on the parade, okay? But I'm going to instruct the chief, uh, the captain, to please that he knows and I know that it's not legal to talk about ongoing investigations. The officer cannot address to you just to pacify anybody if it's an ongoing investigation. I want you to know that. It would be his job, his police officer job and badge if he does that. And in addition to that, it's not legal. That's penalized by the laws of the state of Florida, okay?
Mr. Attorney, he is not going to be asked any such questions. I was a fireman for 33 years. I worked on the streets of Miami and I am very well aware of what you're just alluding to.
I just wanted, I just wanted the record to be clear, okay?
Absolutely. And I would have it no other way. Thank you very much. Captain?
Captain Carlos Aldo, West Miami Police Department, and good evening to all of you. Um, I'm listening to everything that's going on and, and I, I want to assure every resident, especially the residents that live in that area, we are aware of their plight, of what is going on. Every patrol unit in this city is aware of what's going on and they have constant vigilance in that area. They consistently go by there. We will take enforcement action when we see violations. Their safety is of our utmost importance in the police department. Last night, there was a situation, two situations as a matter of fact, initiated by the police department. We were able to go into the house. I can assure everybody on this board and every resident in this city that we were able to observe inside the premises, nothing illegal is going on inside that property as far as narcotics or anything else that we could observe. And that is all I can tell you to keep all of you calm, if, if you will. As far as people visiting the property, leaving the property, whatever action that we see, and I think somebody used the word, every action has a reaction, well, we'll handle it as, as they come, when we come across them. But I can assure you that their safety is, is of utmost importance.
Thank you, Captain.
You're very welcome.
Thank you very much. Mr. Penna, if you can come forth and, and just, uh, briefly elaborate on, on the, the code enforcement, uh, aspect of, of the situation there?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. As, uh, the residents have stated and the manager, the file on, on that property is over an inch thick. That means that for the past four years, as they stated, we have been constantly in that house for any number of reasons. Either constructions that have been done illegally, uh, multiple families living there, uh, and several other violations. The last time, which was probably about 30 days ago, we served them with an abatement notice. And prior to the abatement notice, they cleaned up the property. They mowed the lawn, they took out the trash, and we didn't have to get involved at that point. Since that time, again, the property has grown to a state that's not acceptable. For that reason, we served them on October 1st with another notice of abatement. On the 16th, which is a Friday, we will be able to go in because under state law, we need to provide them notification and ample time for them to address the situation. Once the 15th comes around, they've lost their opportunity and we have the right to go in and clean the property. We already have a contractor that does that for us and he's ready to go on the 16th.
Thank you, Mr. Penna. And, and as I stated, I, I would like to, uh, reassure each and every one of you that we, we're doing everything we can. And we're going to go forth now with, um, um, an impetuous, uh, momentum to try to get something to happen. And, uh, what we just decided today, this evening, to do, maybe hopefully, um, we can get someone to come forth and at least establish some kind of communication. And that would be a, a good beginning, uh, I'm, I'm hoping. Madam Manager, you have anything else to say on this item?
No, sir.
What item are we on? Which was it? Oh, F.
Yes, now we go, can we go back to the order of the agenda?
If, 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 uh, everybody, uh, if anyone wants to come forth and speak, please? If not, that's it? Okay. Next item, please. I think we should go back to the order.
Following the original order of the agenda, item 10, unfinished business under item 10A, a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami approving the expansion of the Garden Club Park located at 1129 Southwest 66th Avenue, West Miami, Florida, for a project amount of $260,000, accepting the community development block grant award in the amount of $125,000 for the expansion of said Garden Club Park. Authorizing the city manager, manager to execute an agreement with Miami-Dade County Office of Public Housing and Community Development, provided for effective date by mayor and city commission.
Madam, Madam Manager?
Thank you. This is a, um, a resolution that is part of the submittal packet that the city must, um, must execute and submit to the Miami-Dade County Office of CDVG for their funding of the Garden Club Park. We are working with a grant writer right now to execute all the documentations and the scope of the work. That entails the resolution, which is basically empowers me to move forward with the grant, accept the dollars, and expend those dollars in the development of the Garden Club Park. So I would recommend that you approve it so that it, we can, uh, send the paperwork on down to the county.
Motion?
Second.
Please call the vote, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Blannes?
Yes.
3-0, item passed.
Madam Clerk, did we skip, uh, item C?
Uh, I, uh, I'm sorry, uh, what item?
C.
Item C?
And D.
No, we're following the order of the agenda, we are on...
I am sorry. I, I, I stand corrected.
Okay, and for the, the next item is item 11C. This is a request by Vice Mayor Blanes to purchase lightning detector to be installed at the West Miami Recreation Center, emergency item by Vice Mayor Blanes.
And I, I request my colleagues to defer this item until the meeting of the 21st. Do we need to vote on that, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, to defer the items.
Yes.
Item C and D.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Suarez, second by Commissioner Blanca, to defer item C and D until October 21st. Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
3-0.
Thank you.
Those two items are deferred.
Next item?
Next item, item 11E, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami, authorizing the city manager an expenditure of $4,020 in connection with the installation of a new water service line for Southwest 9 Terrace from Southwest 57th Avenue to 58th Avenue payable to R&amp;Y Underground, Inc., provided for effective date by mayor and city commission.
Before you move on the resolution, Mr. Mayor, I would ask that you, we yield to Mr. Penna to give you a brief explanation of this item.
Mr. Penna?
Mr. Vice Mayor, Commissioners. The area of Southwest 9 Terrace between 57th Avenue and 58th Avenue has one of the oldest parks of the city and has one of the oldest galvanized lines that we have in the ground. Because of the new development that we're having on that block, they have installed a bigger sized main that is required for their, for their projects. So this main actually has to be tied into the existing main. However, the condition of the existing main is so bad that we've repaired leaks four feet apart in previous occasions. So rather than put more good money into the bad pipe, we want to replace that section of pipe and install a new plastic pipe and change all the new properties that are there to the new pipe. I would just raise the, the amount to 5,000, at the $5,000 cap, because what they provided is an estimate until the work is actually done, it's not a final bill.
Okay, a cap of $5,000.
Correct.
Amen.
Any, any questions?
Yeah, I have a que- this money come from the impact fee, right?
No, this money will come from the water reserves.
Water reserves.
Any questions?
Is not this a capital improvement?
I'm sorry?
Is not this a capital improvement, because we...
It is, but there's no reason to top the, the, the impact fees that you have are...
Sewer, parks, police, and general services.
And general services. You don't have a water impact fee. But, no, in lieu of water impact fee, what we have with developers is they provide the improvement, which most of the time it's...
Yeah, I thought if it's an improvement, we can, we could do it from their money.
Right, but most of the time, the improvements are much more than we could afford if we had a water impact fee, so we let them put in the improvement and turn over the system to us once they're finished.
Motion, second.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
3-0, item passes. The last item on the agenda is item 11G, selection for date for the city's 2015 Lighting of the Trees Ceremony, and it was already decided to be on December 9, 2015, at 6:00 p.m. Motion by Commissioner Suarez, the second by Commissioner Blanca, and all were in favor.
Uh, go to the order. Commissioner Blanca, you have anything?
No.
Commissioner Suarez?
No, good night.
I do have something. I want to extend my apologies to my colleagues, Commissioner Suarez and Commissioner Blanca, for being too pushy tonight. Thank you for putting up with me and understanding how passionate I feel about our city and our residents.
It's not passionate.
I am sorry.
No, it's okay.
And again, it's a privilege and an honor for me to serve here as acting mayor instead